Yeah.
It is five o'clock. I want to call this meeting to, um, call this meeting to order. Let's start with a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we will stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have our clerk to do our board roll call.
Yes, Dr. Gurley. Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Dooley?
Here.
Mr. Morse?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Richardson? And Ms. Torres?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are now going to do our annual reorganization. At this time, I will need a motion from the board to elect a chair for the twenty-five year.
Dr. Gurley, I'd like to, um, make a motion that Ms. Emily Dooley be our chair for this next upcoming year.
All right, is there any dis-
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, at this time, we will take a vote.
Well, I want a discussion.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. One, I just want to thank, uh, Ms. Torres for an excellent job chairing us last year. Thought you did a great job of, uh, setting an example of how to run a good meeting. You facilitated, I think, all of the members', uh, interests and made sure those were on the agenda, and I really appreciate, uh, what you did. Um, I think, Ms. Dooley, I have the same high expectations and, uh, for you and look forward to your, leading us through the next year. Thank you.
Anything else from the floor? All right, at this time, we will take a vote. All in favor, respond by aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Ms. Dooley, you are the board chair. The gavel is now yours. My mic is off.
Thank you. All right, so our next order of business is to elect a vice chair. So I've opened the floor for nominations.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that Ms. Amanda Burns, um, join you as vice chair for this next school year.
I'll second. Any discussion? All right, so at this time, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, welcome, Ms. Burns. I look forward to working with you this year. Uh, next, excuse me, yes. Um, so next up, Dr. Gurley, I'm handing it back over to you.
All right, uh, Madam Chair, I would like to, oh, I would like to appoint Ms. Leslie Thacker as clerk and Ms. Julia, um, Green as the, um, deputy clerk.
Wonderful, so, um, we need a motion to accept those?
Yeah, I'll, um, uphold that motion or I agree with that a hundred percent.
I'll second.
All right, so, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, welcome back as clerks, ladies. We're lucky to have you. Okay, so next up, if I can get a motion to approve our, uh, proposed agenda.
I move to approve the proposed agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. All right, so next up, we are going to move on to seven point O, our comments from members of the community, starting with any comments from students. All right, seeing no students in the audience, we'll move on to comments from members of the community. I believe we have two folks who have signed up to speak. Um, here. Thank you. All right, so first up, Derek Hartline. And so as you start, if you'll say your name and address, and remember that you have up to three minutes for comments.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Gurley. Derek Hartline, fifteen seventeen Antoinette Avenue, lifelong city resident. At the December nineteenth joint session with city council, I voiced my concern not only, not only about the standing leaves in the Jackson Villa staff lot, but also the overgrowth coming through the fence that catches the leaves and allows them to build up and pile back into the lot. I vowed that evening to do a follow-up at tonight's board meeting. The week before New Year's, the grounds and lots were cleared of leaves as they are annually. But hopefully next fall, they will be picked up in the lots more often, and not just at winter break, as the leaves start falling at the start of October. Unfortunately, the fence line was never touched, and many leaves are still hung up in the overgrowth that now is covered with snow and ice. I'm sadly disappointed that even after pleas were made for safer conditions, that the overgrowth remains. I can't bear to see another situation like what happened on November twenty-fifth happen again, where multiple cars go up in flames because of something that is completely avoidable. I have often lived by the quote, "If you want a, if you want a thing done well, do it yourself." Once the snow melts, I will take it upon myself to clear the fence line in the name of safety, as it must get done and done well. Years ago, I took over maintaining both interior courtyards at Jackson Villa, because the crew the city sent to do it were damaging the turtle shells with their string trimmers. Ever since, the turtles have been able to live a very healthy life as a result. My hopes and intentions are for the same to happen with the cleared fence line, where staff feel both comfortable and safe to park their vehicles at work, and not have to fear that something bad like a leaf fire may happen again. Thank you so much for listening to my update and my plan to help resolve this ongoing problem.
Thank you, Mr. Hartline. Uh, next up, we've got Chuck Moran. Wonderful. Uh, anyone else in the media center wishing to give public comment? All right, seeing no takers. Is there anyone? Quiet crowd in the Zoom room as well. All right, so, uh, moving on, uh, we eight point one, our Charlottesville High School Student Representative Report. Welcome back to school today. Um, Ms. Hudok, if you'd like to give us your updates.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope you all had a restful snowy break. I received a lot of, is that a good, okay. I've received a lot of positive feedback on behalf of the CHS student body. Students are pleased with the smoothness of this year and connect the efficiency back to the no-phone policy. Although this isn't a new implementation, the process of involving CSAs in the collection of phones has made a huge impact. Students feel this has allowed them to focus and have noticed significantly fewer conflicts. I also got the chance to speak with a Buford student, and she said the system at Buford seemed to be working great as well. Students would like this to continue into the next school year. Recently, personal devices have been removed from the Wi-Fi. Students are curious as to why this is and if this will continue into the next year. Students who are currently taking AP Biology say the class is going well, but highly request a teacher for the students taking the class next year. They would also like to know in advance if the class will be virtual with an online teacher like it is this year, um, or if there will be a teacher in a class in person before they sign up for the class. Students ask if there will be any changes made to the lunches next year. As students who are athletes and/or rely on school lunches, don't find them to be filling or nutritious options. Along with that, the senior class appreciates the trust and ability to let us go off campus for lunch and would hope that would be passed on to the next, um, class. Students enrolled in the art classes at CHS would benefit from and appreciate an increase in the funding for the arts. It's been requested that the classes have cameras for the students who need to upload pictures for their college portfolio, and also for underclassmen trying to build a portfolio. As a current student in art myself, I have had to bring my materials to school as there are either not enough supplies or the supplies aren't high quality. I'm fortunate to have the ability to bring my own art supplies, but I know that's not the case for everyone. Overall, students are content with their year so far and feel the school system is more cohesive and meets a lot of needs. They appreciate being listened to and the opportunity to have more student body involvement. Thank you for your time, consideration, and the opportunity to speak on behalf of my peers.
Thank you, Ms. Hudok. Uh, next up, uh, nine point one, we have Ms. Chuck with our Johnson Elementary Energy Star recognition.
Good evening, and I am really just here to introduce two colleagues from the city of Charlottesville, Mr. Kirk Visier and Jill Greiner.
Thank you for your time today. We, uh, wait till I guess till our slides come up, um, but we've got a, uh, a presentation today. We just wanted to actually bring your attention to, uh, the Energy Star Award that Johnson Elementary just received. Uh, this is actually a pretty large thing that we try to strive for in the sustainability space. It proves that the facility has been operating efficiently for the past twelve months, and every year you could go back and actually apply each year to get an Energy Star certification. We were able to apply back in December, and I'm sorry, in November, and in December, we learned that it did receive, uh, the Energy Star Score Certification. Uh, the score was a seventy-five, and just to give you a little bit of background, uh, seventy-five is, it's on a scale of one to one hundred. Seventy-five actually means that it's performing in, uh, better than seventy-five percent of the schools across the nation when it comes to energy performance. So when you achieve that level, you can actually start to apply for a certification to, uh, to show that you've actually, uh, achieved that, you've actually had it reviewed by an outside, uh, data verification professional engineer, and, uh, you can, uh, show that you're actually performing very well. So it's actually something that we can put at the school and show that, uh, that's had some good performance. Um, another way to put it is that, uh, it's basically using twenty-five percent less energy than the median school across the nation, so sort of the average schools. So it's kind of, it's using twenty-five percent less. Uh, and compared to the median school across the nation, it actually uses eighty-eight percent, I'm sorry, eighty-eight point two less metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions. So we're emitting less, uh, GHG emissions right now because of the good performance at Johnson Elementary. Just to kind of put that a little bit of perspective, uh, eighty-eight point two metric tons is equivalent to, uh, have it on, on the slide, but it's that eighteen homes electricity use for one year. Uh, we've basically taken that out of the equation, uh, reduced by that much. Carbon sequestration, so the amount of carbon that, uh, that, uh, trees could pull sort of out of the air, uh, eighty-eight point five acres worth of that, uh, is, is what's equivalent to the eighty-point-two metric tons that we produced. And it's like, the equivalent to taking twenty, over twenty, uh, passenger vehicles off the road for a full year. So, um, these are actually pretty big impacts, and seventy-five is a fantastic score. We want to try to maintain that at Johnson Elementary. And, uh, if we go to the next slide, uh, or I guess I can do that. I'm sorry about that. There we go. Um, I just wanted to, to show that, uh, really, these scores are driven by operations, and, uh, that really is attributed to who's in the school, what they're doing in the school, our plug load, our turning off lights, sort of the behavior of students, of faculty and staff. Uh, this is showing that, that we're actually doing a really good job, we're having an impact at that school, and we want to keep trying to promote that. Uh, the facilities maintenance team is doing a fantastic job of making sure the HVAC and the lighting is running appropriately. There's a new building automation system at that school, and they're making sure that's dialed in appropriately to run schedules right and make sure we're not running more than normal. So the facilities maintenance team has a lot to do with that as well. So it's sort of the behavior and operation side that come into making sure that we, we, uh, are achieving this seventy-five score. At the school, we're actually received a decal. So, uh, on the screen, you can see there's a, a Energy Star kind of an etched-looking decal, and we're going to put that at the front of the school to show, uh, that when you enter this facility, it is an Energy Star certified facility. And we're looking to, uh, do that as well for other, uh, school facilities as when they become eligible. So we're going to try to keep, keeping those Energy Star scores rising and, uh, see what we can achieve. So, um, just wanted to alert you to that, because that's such, it's a really great achievement for the students and faculty there, as well as the operations team, kind of on the backs, backend side of things. Um, and we just want to try to keep up the good work. So, um, we're going to be presenting to, actually, uh, Johnson Elementary. We're going to be talking to the students at their next school-wide meeting, which I think was rescheduled from tomorrow to next Friday. So we're going to be going to that and presenting, uh, to the school as well. So, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your presentation tonight and your efforts. I love the engagement of the students in the accolade as well, and we look forward to continuing to partner with you and your, uh, team at the city to bring all of our buildings up to more efficient levels. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, next up, we will move to adopt our consent agenda. Welcome a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to adopt that consent agenda.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, next up, we'll move to eleven point one, our school name review update.
All right, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board, uh, last month in December, we gave you an update on our school naming process that concluded, um, at which time, um, we presented you with the remaining four schools. This evening, uh, I asked that you, um, approve the recommendation to change Burnley Moran Elementary to Sunrise Elementary, um, and Johnson Elementary to Tall Oaks Elementary, as well as, uh, retain the names of Jackson Villa Elementary and Greenbrier.
All right, thank you. Um, we, do we need to approve these each? I think we should separate them out. And so let's start with the change of Burnley Moran to Sunrise, um, if there can be a motion.
Madam Chair, um, I move that we do, uh, accept the superintendent's recommendation to, um, rename or change the name of Burnley Moran Elementary to Sunrise Elementary.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'll open the floor for any discussion on this motion.
Madam Chair, just real quickly, I, I was able to be part of the committee or one of the, the board members on the committee for this. So as a whole, for each, each of these, um, this comment pertains to those that I just really wanted to applaud the work that was done to kind of get us up to speed as far as the process that was used and the work, um, that each of the committees did, the individuals, um, that represented the schools and any, any, uh, community members that were part of that. I was really impressed with the, um, the work and the heart and soul that was put into it. So I just want to extend, um, gratitude, um, for the process.
Absolutely. So we have a motion and a second, uh, for approving the name change for Burnley Moran to Sunrise Elementary School. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposition? All right, that passes. Um, next up, we will look at the motion for Johnson Elementary School's name change.
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we change Johnson Elementary School's name to Tall Oaks Elementary School.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the Johnson Elementary name change? All right, hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, that motion carries. Um, next up, retaining the name of Greenbrier Elementary School as such. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we retain the name of Greenbrier Elementary School as recommended by the committee and superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of retaining Greenbrier Elementary School's name?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, that passes. And finally, uh, Jackson Villa Elementary School retaining its name, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we retain the name of Jackson Villa Elementary School as recommended by the superintendent committee.
Second.
All right, I believe that was Ms. Cooper seconding that motion. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right, thank you to your team and their work on that.
Thank you all for acknowledging the hard work of that committee and team. Um, next, eleven point two, we will have Dr. Odie, who will come up with our program of studies.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gurley, good evening. Uh, last month in December, staff did present to you the draft twenty-five, twenty-six program of studies. Tonight, uh, the superintendent recommends that you take action.
All right, uh, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the proposed program of studies?
I move to approve the proposed program of studies.
We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and then I would open it up for discussion on the motion to approve. We've got some people lurking on the sidelines to answer questions, should they arise?
Just, just clarifying question again, I think I asked this at the last meeting, but, uh, in regards to the engineering program, again, the modifications to the engineering program that we're making will help us ensure that easier staff, among other things.
The answer is yes. Um, uh, we did, uh, remove the requirement for specific certification in, in engineering master's degrees, so someone with a technology foundation, uh, endorsement could teach these, such, like, courses. My apologies.
That, and, Dr. Odie, that includes the, um, dual enrollment courses as well?
No. Dual enrollment will stay at PBCC online. They have people there that can teach those courses.
So, and then the, um, just the experiential, are there differences as far as what the students might see, um, if they're taking the class at PBCC versus here?
That is yet to be seen. They, in, they begin the course on January twenty-first. So this will be our first time experiencing the online with PBCC, but Alamo also has it online. The DE is very hard to, um, find someone with a master's to teach it at a high school level. So we're trying to give the students as much of opportunity to continue their pathway to engineering, but also provide entry-level courses to technology and engineering for all students.
Ms. Tor, so the, just to make sure we're clear, the barrier for that is that that course requires a master's degree in engineering. So that's what makes it difficult to staff.
Yeah, and I guess lowering the barrier or removing that barrier, that's why I was wondering if there was going to be a, a difference, um, well, number one.
So you can't lower it, right. For it to be dual, for it to be dual enrollment, you can't, yeah.
Right, no, I understand that, but I, I guess, um, in some of the comments or concerns that we had received as a board, there was just a question as to whether or not the experiential, the labs, the hands-on, and I think Dr. Coffey has answered that, but we don't know that yet.
Right. I, I mean, I would, I would say, I would speculate that if you're taking a course online, it is going to be much different than having it face-to-face. So I mean, I would not, I wouldn't want to, um, tell someone that the experience, that experience wouldn't be different, because we know, we've, we've seen what online courses look like. Um, so I would imagine that that part would be different. I don't know how, what we, will be enhanced, or, you know, if there's some practicums required, and of course, that part I don't know. But yes, it will be a different experience, because it's going to be online.
And, and I would imagine, um, that we've always appeared to do a really good job of, of, you know, receiving student feedback. So if, if that were something, or if there was enough of feedback that, um, might garnish or, or make us reconsider this, or consider, you know, continue to try and hire somebody who could teach the dual enrollments on-site as opposed to?
Yeah, we're not taking them out of the program of studies. The, the DEs will stay in there.
Right.
And cross our fingers that someone with the masters of engineering would want to come and teach our students. It's a great place, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, any further questions or discussion from board members?
I, Ms., yeah, I'm sorry. So, and another, if, if Dr. Gurley or Dr. Coffey or someone could speak to, um, I know that through the years, we, we made some decisions, um, to try and allow, um, are, some of our younger students to have exposure to engineering. So at Walker, to have, uh, the elective engineering, um, so as far as the diversity and trying to continue to increase the diversity of students. Can you speak to one of you? I know you and I spoke, Dr. Gurley, a little bit, but just speak to how, um, we as a school division are working to try and, um, increase opportunities for students to touch engineering, um, and have exposure to that in, in the different levels, whether it be Walker or New Middle School.
So it starts with ISTEM, which I'm very proud of. It's an amazing program. Um, they work very hard on the curriculum to ensure that they are exposed to engineering, but also science. We always say, lead, lead with science, so it's the science, then the engineering and the math. Then, in the middle school, we're hoping to continue that engineering pathway. So right now, we have foundations in seventh grade and engineering one and eighth grade. So when sixth grade comes in, we're hoping just to continue with that. And, uh, Mr. Jordan, we spoke at programs of studies and the reconfiguration that there's a possibility that we will have like a wheel in sixth grade where they can experience multiple different fields, and then they'll still have foundations in engineering one in middle school, and we recruit them. We, we continue to show and expose all these wonderful things that they're doing in engineering. The lab school's huge with this right now. We're partnering with engineering. So some of the things that they're doing in engineering, we're like, hey, we're doing this in science, so it's a lot of collaboration there. So we're basically in the science classroom, kind of gearing them up for the engineering classes.
Any additional questions? All right, so we've got a motion and a second to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six program of studies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
All right, we now have our, our items for discussion. Uh, first up, we will have Bianca Johnson. Uh, there she is, and she will give us a family, uh, engagement update, as well as restorative justice in education.
Good evening, you, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Gurley. My name is Bianca Johnson, and this evening, I'll be presenting updates on both family engagement and restorative justice in education here at CCS. In this presentation, I'll share how we continue to meet basic needs, provide school support and community engagement, as well as an overview of- provide school support and community engagement, as well as an overview of restorative justice and education, some data that I've compiled in the last two years, and our partnership with Central Virginia Community Justice. And I will wrap up with what's next in both worlds. Um, according to schoolquality.gov, last school year, around sixty-three percent of our students were considered economically disadvantaged. This is well over half of our student population. And this is a new data, most of the people in the room are aware of this. And because of this, removing barriers and expanding access to basic needs continues to be a priority within Division Family Engagement. Our collaborative work with community partners that you all heard about in November helps make this happen. The Emergency Food Network supports us with food bags for all breaks during the school year. They also provide no barrier access to food cards for all students and families and hygiene supplies in our secondary schools. The numbers that you see on the screen are for this school year so far. But within the last two years, the Emergency Food Network has provided us with support tolling over forty thousand dollars, including over a thousand bags of food, around a hundred and fifty gift cards, and hundreds, if not close to thousands at this point, of hygiene supplies. This nonprofit works really hard to assemble their own volunteer teams to assemble the bags. And then Family Engagement will coordinate the manpower to pick up the bags, deliver them to schools, distribute them to families. Thanks for our amazing mental health staff and other staff that continue to show up and deliver to schools. Buford Eats is in its third year of running at our middle school. They mainly run a monthly food distribution program for the students and families there. Students and families can sign up anytime to receive the support. This is led by Buford's social worker Tara Johnson, along with the committee of teachers that help run their monthly food pop-ups in conjunction with dismissal or school events. Pop-ups are open to anyone in the community to receive food. This is in partnership with the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank, who helps us by providing additional food boxes during summer and winter break. It's been a while since you guys have received an update, so you'll see two years worth of data this evening. Last school year, we had around thirty-three families sign up for a monthly distribution. However, with the addition of pop-ups, there was a total of eleven thousand pounds of food given out, with over seven thousand of that being fresh produce. This school year, as of early November, we have twenty, we had twenty-two families signed up today. There are twenty-eight families signed up for monthly food distribution. Almost five thousand pounds of food has been given away, and over three thousand of that was fresh produce. This team has done tremendous work on top of their already assumed diet, uh, duties to continue this great food program. We continue to meet basic needs with Edzone, our partnership with the Chris Long Foundation that provides essential needs closets in all of our elementary schools. Our six Edzone champions in the building work to take requests to get items to families. CLF also supports our school supplies and coats annually. Last year, there were over five hundred closet visits total, and just by November notice, uh, numbers, excuse me, we're already close to five hundred. One thing that has definitely allowed us to better meet needs in a timely manner is having onsite storage space. Thank you to those that continue to ask and advocate for this. Requests for items to be replenished or to schools can now be fulfilled usually within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, which is essential because the access or lack thereof could be a factor on whether or not a kid comes to school that day. Support drives continue to run yearly for our students, and in these last two years, Family Engagement has provided over a thousand backpacks and close to six hundred coats. I've also worked to check in and provide support to school family engagement teams as needed through community connections, explaining best practices and also providing, um, direct family support as needed. Part of the work is coordinating community outreach around important conversations like rezoning or sharing information with families through the Dream Builders Program, or making spaces for exposure and community at family tailgates. All right, to the RJ world. In the restorative world, the fundamental hypothesis or the big ideas that humans are more happier, cooperative, productive, and more likely to make positive changes in their behavior when people in positions of authority do things with them, not to or for them. Restorative Practices aims to develop community and manage conflict by repairing harm and restoring relationships. I think that people generally think of restorative practices or restorative justice and education and assume that it's mainly about conflict. One of my biggest, um, goals in this role is to shift that narrative or belief. To the right on our screen, you'll see a triangle that explains restorative work in tiers, mirroring how we discuss the multi-tiered systems of support or NTSS. Just like MTSS, tier one is for everyone, and the proactive approach that we want to continue to elevate. It focuses on building and strengthening relationships. And tier two and tier three are more responsive approaches and focus on harm or reentry back into the school community. My role in this work is consisted of tier-one capacity building where time allows, but mainly receiving referrals or requests to support students or staff through different incidents and then working through the process. This consists of groundwork, which are individual meetings where I can hear their story about what they're needing, what happened, and what they're wanting to move forward. From there, we'll decide if it's best to bring these folks together to talk about what happened or to figure out other ways to find solutions. During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, there were over a hundred meetings with around twenty-six staff and about thirty-eight students. Of those incidents, seven remained in the first phase or what we consider our groundwork meetings. And this is due to either a non-response from a participant or them deciding that they didn't want to move forward with the process, which is okay because it's voluntary. I facilitated twelve full conferences around five community building circles and fifteen community concern circles. There were seven opportunities for professional development for staff and one community-facing presentation to share about RJU with families. During this school year, there have been around thirty-one groundwork meetings so far involving fourteen staff and nine students. We've had three full conferences and three open incidents still in phase one, our groundwork meetings that haven't moved forward. There have been three community building circles, four community concern circles or check-ins, two opportunities for staff to be fully trained in tier-one practices, three sessions offered during professional development days and training provided to community partners. Last year, we created a partnership with Central Virginia Community Justice, a nonprofit that receives diverted court cases from our local Commonwealth attorneys and works through the restorative process with those involved in the criminal justice system. Through a state grant, we were able to pilot having facilitators at CHS to respond to things in real time. This pilot was during the last quarter of the school year, so for about two months. But it's important to see the reach in that short amount of time. Um, the two facilitators you see here, Jackie and Catherine, were able to connect with over fifty students and fifteen staff and facilitate seven full conferences between students and staff. Most of their support was supported, uh, was provided to ninth and tenth graders. In terms of impacts and three incidents, three students felt empowered enough to resolve their own conflict independently and positively. A third of the students built a relationship and wanted to check in with the facilitators post-conflict, and all parties reported an overall general satisfaction with the process and the outcomes. This school year, we've tapped into the facilitators to support tier-one training, to help with smaller staff circles. And thanks to more grant funding, they'll return to buildings to continue their support sometime this month. To quickly put those numbers together, this work has supported fifty-two staff, eighty-eight students, and nineteen full conferences resolved in a way that centered dignity of all the parties, the needs of the harmed, and overall ba, better path to moving forward. As the school year continues, so does the work. This evening, I highlighted quite a few numbers for you. And whether we're talking about those or data numbers in our buildings, we have to continually acknowledge that needs are increasing. There is a need for more basic need support, more staffing, more time to provide instruction, intervention, support for staff, students, and the list goes on. With this increased need, perhaps, we also need to consider the need for more or different engagement. And so now is the time for questions. Pondering, what does this look like? How can we do this in consideration with staff capacity or family capacity or student capacity? What does universal engagement look like? Based on best practice, what is the baseline for any staff, student, or family? What's going well, and how can we sustain that? What does community visibility look like? Where are the places that we as a division can be more intentional while being? Who needs to be there? Where is the space for community and collaboration of, in all of this? These are not questions that I have answers to today. But I hope through this presentation tonight, you'll see that both family and community engagement and the work in restorative justice is trying really hard to meet the current needs. And welcome to feedback and conversations from everyone in this room and beyond, additional community partners and funding as we look towards the future as well. If there are any questions?
Thank you. I'll look to my colleagues for additional questions and discussion, but just a thank you to you and your team. I think even going back to beyond a year ago, the reset that this community was able to accomplish would not have been possible without your work and your team's work. And so thank you for doing that and keeping that work ongoing. Um, and I think we're all interested in how we can support and, uh, expand that work, um, especially as we're heading, are we heading into budget season, or we're already thickly in budget season, thinking about how, um, we need to continue expanding on the critical work that you're doing? So I'm going to start on this side with Ms. Hudok, if you have any comments or questions?
Not right now.
Fair enough. Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, uh, one, yeah, thank you again for, like my chair said, and for all the work, I think, especially again, in helping, uh, get us to a good spot last year. And then again, I think start the school year strong this year. All right, my, my, I see a lot of great outreach here, especially around food, et cetera. And these are meeting essentials for students to be able to basically be able to learn, right? And, and hopefully again, not to go hungry and on the weekends and stuff like that. What I struggle with a little bit is, is we're an education institution, not a, a supermarket and, and a food. So I guess where do you see, do we need to do more of that? Or are we kind of bumped up to where you think it's the right level and, and we're providing the amount of support we need?
Yeah.
Specific to, again, distributing food.
Yeah, I, I'm really glad that you asked that question. Um, one thing that I think about often is Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? We cannot talk about education if their basic needs are not being met, right? And so part of that is that I shared this, this, uh, this number earlier in the presentation that over half of our students are considered economically disadvantaged. That means that they struggle to, to even have things like food. I don't know if you saw the quote, um, at the Edzone presentation, but there, there were sisters sharing toothbrushes, right? So like, these are the, the needs that we come across. And so when we want kids to do everything that they can in the classroom, it's our duty to some capacity to make sure that those barriers are removed to make that happen. And so when you see these food programs and these food distributions, that's to meet that need so that when they get to the school, they can focus on everything that they need to in that classroom and not worry about their stomach grumbling so they can't focus on what they need to learn.
Thanks.
Thank you. This, Johnson, you and I go back a little bit, and I, from here, thank you for the work that you've done over the years, to get us where we're at, but also have the vision to move us forward and to see where our students and our staff, because we hear you're working with our staff as well, are being met where they are and doing the work. And so thank you. I wonder, as you're doing this work in the community, your team is you, right? And, and I see you put out calls for help, hey, we need help delivering this, or we need help delivering that. And when you ask the question about, um, like, who's doing this work with you and what does this look like long-term? What does the presence in the community look like? I ask that question myself, um, at various events in town. So I've just, I hope that there are conversations happening on how we can utilize more staff to, um, be a presence and be a face, not just yours, but the teachers that they know and they trust, and the CSAs that they know and they trust. And how do we continue to build relationships beyond these walls with people that they're seeing every day in their buildings? And so that's, that's my thought, is how we continue to do that work with people they know every day.
Thank you.
Uh, I just have a very simple question. I, I may have missed it in your presentation. Could you define full conference? Like, what does that consist of?
Yeah, so, um, the short version of the whole process is I'll get a spiel, or what we call a referral from someone, right? This thing has happened, it's maybe a few sentences. I don't want a lot of information because I want to hear from the participants, right? Um, I'll ask who was ever bringing me the referral to make sure that they actually want to do this, and they're not being voluntold to do this, right? Once consent has happened, then I'll start meeting with people individually. So that's what we call groundwork. Well, they'll get to tell their story about what happened. What are they thinking since everything has happened and what they're needing to move forward, right? Um, and then I'll do that with all the parties. Usually it's like one or two people, but sometimes it's, it's a group of people, right? And then when they're in a, in a good place, a lot of times people say, well, like, how long does this process take? And I, I always say it takes as long as it takes, right? You can have as many groundwork meetings as you need to be prepared to come forward with the people that you have harmed or been harmed by. Um, and so the full conference looks like, um, the person that was harmed, the person that caused harm, or if there's a group of people that all need to come together, it's everybody at the table, where everybody gets a chance to talk about what happened. What were they thinking at the time? What have they thought about since, and what are they needing to move forward? Um, and each person will get a chance to kind of share those things. And then from there, we move in towards, uh, what we call the problem-solving process or the agreement phase, where that's where, um, they get to decide, okay, I'm going to do this, or I'm going to not communicate with you during this time, or this is how I'm going to communicate, or this is how our relationship is going to look from this moment on. And, um, if people want, uh, a written agreement, it's not a legally binding agreement. It's more of like a good faith agreement. And sometimes that's helpful for like admin, right? Of like, these students talked about this, this is what they've agreed to, so they've, they've got that to go back to if something else happens. Um, and so the last part of the conversation is, okay, this is what we've agreed to. Do we see anything that doesn't look good to somebody? Do we see any barriers to maybe, like, doing what we said we were going to do? Um, and then from there, I kind of let them go on. I'll give them about two to three weeks where I'll check in to say, hey, this is what you've decided on, how are things going? For the most part, people are okay, but every once in a while, we may have to go back to the groundwork phase to maybe revisit some of those things. But, um, that last email that I send to kind of follow up, if everything's going well, we consider that incident like closed. And so that's kind of the, the whole process.
Thank you so much for that summary. Um, about this time last year, I did a workshop with Central Virginia Community Justice, hosted by Tom Tom. And it was roughly twenty, twenty-five random community members that, that came into Tom Tom. And we went through just a few of those pieces. And, you know, in that moment, there weren't people that were, you know, harmed by someone else sitting in the room. But the, some of the ways that, that the, the questions, um, to facilitate that mediation were worded. At the end of the meeting, you could see about fifty percent of the people like in tears. Um, it's, it's, from my experience, it's been very, um, it's very impactful. Um, and I'm so happy that you have that partnership with them.
Thank you.
Um, uh, thanks for the presentation. I think that, um, I would say I've been, um, I have, I've been a privilege to like, being a part of like the restorative justice work. Um, and I would agree with Dom, like when I left, I think Emily was there as well. Um, you wanted to, when, once we were finished, like you wanted to hug the person next to you. Um, and so I think that work is important. But I also think that the work of like, basic needs being met, uh, we expect our kids to come to school, but we don't know, um, what's happening behind the scenes. So I love the fact that we're able to provide these services. You know, I've seen, you know, food insecurities in the community. I've seen, um, not having, um, the basic needs met. And so being able to provide that in our schools warms my heart to know that, you know, it's an opportunity if a family is struggling that they can come and get food and that their basic needs will be met. Um, and I think that's what community work looks like. And I think unless you are doing all of the things, um, to help our children thrive, then we're missing the mark. So I appreciate that.
Um, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for breaking it down, the whole process. Um, seems like a lot of hard work is put into this process, and we want to make sure that everything we're doing is for the children. And I see it through your speech, through the presentation, that you care, and we need that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with your restorative justice, as you wrapped up, um, all of the questions that I had, you said, I don't have the answers to those. So, um, I am here to support you, and, and as we continue this work, because this work is so important. And, um, I know you have my support. Um, and I look forward to when we, when we can get some, some of those answers. But more specifically, was curious, like, have you, or, um, yeah, have you, I guess, branched into the community at all to start some of this work? Like with the city, is there any outreach or are there any communicate, or, uh, conversations about how we can kind of partner?
Are you speaking to the restorative?
Yes.
Um, so I also work for CVCJ, um, and so I receive a lot of the court cases, many of our juveniles actually, that are in this very building. So I feel like we have a really good partnership. Our co-directors have great relationships with the attorneys and know to talk to the right people to connect, to, to spread more awareness. I think maybe there could be some more. I think maybe there could be some more intentional conversations about diversion of funding. But I think that on our end, we would need to be really intentional about a good implementation plan to make sure it's sustainable.
Well, please let us know. I mean, if we, if we can do anything as a board to help support that. And then back to just the engagement and the supports to students on the ground. Can you talk us through or talk me through, like, how does that happen at an elementary school? Like, how do you know who, who applies or who asks? Are parents coming in?
Yeah.
I'm sure it looks different.
So each school has an Ed Zone champion. And so, those champions kind of have their own process. But for the most part, there's usually like a generic form that either families can fill out, a teacher can fill out, or they will send a form with like images versus the actual words of the things that they need, and send that home in school folders. And so, the families can check what they need. When that teacher opens the folder, here is the folder of the things. Let me take that to the Ed Zone champion. They go fulfill what the order is. And then they'll also decide, like, if it needs to be delivered, they'll coordinate with the school social worker. If the family can pick it up, they'll drop it off at car pickup. Or if it's small enough to be sent home with the student, they'll put it in their backpacks.
That's awesome, and how creative, right? So I applaud you with that. You know, my heart is with you in that work. And, and, yeah, again, anything that we can do to continue to support and to get those essentials to our kids.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you. I also just want to say one more thing. I know, Ms. Burns, you had asked, mostly my work is by myself, but I do want to credit my supervisor, Dr. Johnson, who also jumps in when she can to help as well. So we do what we can. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we have the Middle School Project, Charlottesville Middle School.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board members and Dr. Gurley. I'm excited to share this update. This is always a great project to talk about. And before we dive into the latest details, I always like to ground everyone, especially the public, if they're just really starting to tune in, in where we're going. This is the vision of the completed project, current Beaufort campus. So just like people to get that overview to start. And if Mr. Jordan, yep, good, he's here. So between the two of us, we'll be, we should be able to answer any questions you have. This is the job site camera. If you look back through the updates, I always start with this view, because I feel like it's like a specific reference point. And I like to just have it at the front end. Of course, this was from mid-December, because we needed to submit our materials for this meeting before the winter break. But they are just steady, steady at it. And I know many of you that have had the opportunity to see inside. And tonight in this presentation, we'll be able to get, give the public some view on the inside, which I think folks are interested to see. Again, kind of looking holistically at where we're going. When you look at the campus, if you start in the back on what's going to be called Building A, and the new configuration, it's the new gym. And then that's attached to the, the new segment that's going to be the seventh grade wing. And on the lower level of that, there are fitness studios. Then that attaches to what's going to be the new sixth grade wing in the end. And the lower level of that has some beautiful art studios. And then that red area is the existing building where our seventh and eighth grade classes are now. That's going to be fully remodeled, starting next year. And we'll talk more about phasing in a bit. And then, of course, the performing arts building also gets a full remodel next year as well. So we'll focus on phasing later in the presentation. But continuing with kind of the current state of affairs on the exterior, from that job site camera view that I always share, if you proceed around to the back, which not many people get to see, because it's restricted to construction traffic, this first picture shows the back of the seventh grade wing, and you start to see the gym there in the back. And then I take you to, the, the next shot is the far corner of the gym on the backside. And if you walk up around there, you're kind of looking at the side of that new seventh grade wing with the existing cafeteria on your right, the new gym on the left. And again, these are mid-December views, so there's been more work, certainly more work over the past month. But now, let's look at, start looking inside. And I think that's what I'm most excited to share this evening. This is what you see in, a typical classroom now has all the ceiling grids in, the windows are in, and drywall is up. Out in the halls, we have tile going up. Like, this is one of the new restroom areas, which we love, love, love. This, this new restroom standard where there are individual toilet rooms, and then the shared area for the sinks. You can see inside one of the toilet rooms, they're all fully tiled. There's tile on the floor there. There's a ton of electrical and mechanical equipment going in now. Really, all of the trades are engaged right now, all over the building. It is a busy, busy beehive if you go in that building right now, which it, it's, it's, it's very, very active. I totally geeked out getting to see where all the geothermal wells come into the building, which is near the gym. So excited to see that. That's the picture on the right side. And then I just threw in some of the views that are more landscape, if you will, to kind of give the big view of, of any given corridor. And again, you see all that drywall, still some open ceilings, mostly open ceilings. There's another great shot. I, I love all the natural light that's going to be in this new building. The, the spaces just glow, even though it's still very much a construction site. It, it's just beautiful to me. There's paint that's actually going up in some areas. The accent wall colors, you see those in various spots. People here can see some of the new color, the, in the new building. And this is one of the last I have. I don't know why I'm going in and out, Pat. This is a, where the old meets the new. This is, on the right-hand side, you can see the building that houses all of our seventh and eighth grade classes now. It's kind of like you'd be looking into Mr. Jordan's office there on the left, on the right-hand side. And remember, this is the area where it's going to have like a glass ceiling. So what's so cool when you're standing there is you realize that this actual, this feeling, this natural light is still going to be there, even when it's all connected and enclosed, because that whole line there between the old and the new is a, is a glass roof. So we'll talk more about that area in some of the other slides coming up. But that's where it stood, you know, mid-December before winter break. All right, so again, trying to start getting people used to the new labeling of the buildings. It goes from the gym being Building A, and then B, C, D, E, F. We'll end with the fine and performing arts, our very fine performing arts building, which will be Building F. I'm already working on ways to reprogram my brain to get the letters with the right buildings. So we start with the gym letter A. This is the phasing. And all of that kind of coral peach color, A, B, and C, that's the new construction that's underway right now. And we are, it is, it is 2025. I have to remind myself of that every time I write a date right now. And we are still tracking along for substantial completion on Phase 1 of this calendar year, 2025. And at that point, we move into Phase 2, which involves the blue area up there. And so, essentially, what happens next year is we move into all the new construction with the seventh and eighth grade for next year. And then in the back, where it's kind of blue and peach coral colored, where it says current D building, those of you who are familiar with the Beaufort campus, there's that not-so-great breezeway that runs down beside the building, and then you, you go into that area. We're going to have to use that building for the first half of next school year for dining. And I'm going to explain all of that in more detail in a minute. But the areas that are grayed out, that's where the construction moves into this coming summer. So I want to talk more about the logistics for next year, so people can start to wrap their heads around. Was it because I was touching it? I don't know, I had my hand beside it. Alrighty. So this, you see Cherry Avenue there at the top, and then Ninth Street down the side. Next year, when students return for the fall, the parent drop-off and pickup is going to be what's now the bus loop. So we're going to want all car traffic next year to enter and exit on Cherry, okay? Because the, when we get into renovating the existing building that we're using and the performing arts building, even that parking lot is going to be taken up with that work. So parents driving to Beaufort will come in and out on Cherry and use the loop. For our staff, and our buses, and our food deliveries, and our trash service, and our construct, and of course, the construction traffic, that's all that should be coming in off Ninth Street. Staff will have tags, and when they come in off Ninth, Ninth Street, they're going to proceed down to the new parking lot that's down below the gym. And for the interim year, we're also going to not complete the basketball court area. We're going to have that kind of lined off with some temporary lines, and that will be additional parking. The contractor and the city have done some counting. And supposedly, we're going to be losing 52 parking spaces, but gaining 69 down below, including using the basketball court, what will eventually be the basketball court area as temporary parking. So our staff will have tags, and they will come in off Ninth, and they'll proceed down to that parking area. And then they will exit at the end of the day out towards Cherry, just like a bus will. Our buses next year will start coming in on Ninth Street and using the new bus loop. So the buses will be looping out that way as well. And we'll still have to get food deliveries off that entrance. Trash service will still have to come on, in off that entrance. But that's really, the Ninth Street entrance should really just be those, those things. Other logistics for next year. So already mentioned, the current A and B buildings are not available, the main building and the auditorium building. Our new gym is open, so let's just take a moment to appreciate that. The, we will no longer be limited to just having the boys and girls building, which we've been so thankful for that partnership, so that our students had some gym space. But it's going to be great for the students and for the health and PE department to have the new gym. The fitness rooms will not come online initially as fitness rooms. The fitness rooms are where we're focusing our performing arts classes. They're large spaces. We're working through those details with that team. But Mr. Jordan is doing a fine job of laying out what we can do. So kind of the fine art, the, the performing arts is sort of like the health and PE team has been. You know, they have to kind of make the sacrifice for next year in order to get their wonderful new spaces. They'll be moving back into the following year. Seventh grade moves into their new space and B, and what's, what is the new B building. And that's where seventh grade is going to stay. Eighth grade moves into what will ultimately be the sixth grade space for the one year. The library area for next year will be in that lovely glass-topped area, sort of in a, in the corridor. We're going to bring in the media center shelves that are on wheels or mobile. And we're, we're, again, Mr. Jordan's done a great job working with the teacher for that area to make sure that we will, you know, there'll still be library services. But it's just going to be kind of in the corridor area. And those shelves are very mobile, so they can be pushed up against the wall at the end of the day, or whatever we need to do. But that, that plan is being worked out. And then other offices and educational spaces in the new building are, there are going to be some, people are going to be in different spots than where they will land permanently when we get all of our space back. And then the other big change is the dining situation, because they have, they won't, they can't complete the whole dining area and the kitchen in, in a summer. So we, the, we will get it back by winter break. But for the first half of the year, it's going to be like Jackson, like what we do for Jackson Villa now. Those of you who don't know, Jackson Villa doesn't have a kitchen either. Food is prepped here at the high school and delivered. Mr. Jones and his team are geared up. We will be prepping the hot food, and it will be delivered to the Beaufort campus, where there's some temporary construction that's happening in the D building. There's going to be some classrooms and some masonry work, so you'll enter into what's now a classroom. And then you'll go out, do another classroom. It, it's, and we're putting water service in for the serving lines, and everything's going to be up to code for food service. But we're obviously not installing a full kitchen. And then we will, we also have a guarantee from the contractor. They'll have a covered walkway from the new construction to get into that building as nicer, nicer than that breezeway that goes back to the D building currently. And then there are some opportunities where outside of like that art studio and the fitness studio, there's some new like terrace areas, or we could have some, maybe some outdoor dining on nicer days. So we'll hope for that. And then, excited, we're very excited that after winter break, during winter break, we will transition into the new kitchen and cafeteria area, and then the D building goes away. So they will get into the new kitchen and cafeteria for the second half of the next school year. But that first half, we're going to be working it out in that, that what's currently called D building. So looking ahead, I want to show folks where we are with our interior concepts. A lot of the finishes have been selected and stuff. They may not be all exactly final in these pictures, but these are good representations to give folks an idea of what things will be like in the new, in the new areas. These are new classrooms. There are different types of desks, depending on whether it's science or a Makerspace-type room, or some of them, what they call that thumbprint, which is the curved, and some of them are the square desks. But regardless, everything is very movable and flexible to facilitate collaboration. All of the learning wings have breakout spaces, and there's different colors that sort of designate. So like that blue, I believe is sixth grade, green is seventh, and then that reddish maroon color is the eighth grade. Again, lots of movable pieces to allow folks to gather in different ways. These are some more breakout areas. The one that's at the top, you can see one of the new murals that's going to be coming in, and that's looking at the, you have these, I think they call them story stairs. They're gathering places that are common in more modern schools. That, that's a fitness studio there at the bottom of the stairs. And then this other breakout area just shows the type of spaces that will be at the end of some of the halls, where, where folks can gather in a small group. This is that area from that photo where Dr. Gurley was standing with the glass ceiling. Like, you see the natural light just pouring in. And again, we're going to get the cafeteria at the end of, for the second half of next year. But this is a rendering showing you kind of more about what that space will be like. The chairs won't be white. Those are just placeholders for furniture. This is an example of the LEAP classroom and a sensory space. We have some really great spaces, very intentionally designed with Rachel Rastnik and her team for our students with different needs. And this is that breakout space, again, in the area where the ceiling is glass. And instead of the, this is outside of where the permanent media center will be there on the right. But for the next year, for the interim, on the other side of those stairs is where there's going to be shelving set up, and that will be the interim year media center space. This is, these are some views inside of the media center area. There's going to be some different study and breakout classroom spaces, and then some really great furniture. Those blue chairs are ones that are actually going in, and they're, they're really neat. I think the students are really going to appreciate a lot of this furnishing. And then the dining area is really going to be nice. There's going to be different types of seating. We're going to start to bring in the orange color for the new mascot, because that terrace overlooks the gym. We'll still have the dining terrace with picnic tables. And this is a look at the office area when you come in. Again, those furniture selections don't exactly show the final, I believe. And there'll be more about this later, but the, the whole desk at the front is made out of the, from the wood, from that oak, from the tree, the oak that was taken from Beaufort. So that's where they, I believe, are using that wood. So I'm kind of ending where we'll begin, so to speak, because I believe that's my last slide of the interior views. But I thought this would be a good time to start giving people that vision of, of what the, how the whole design comes together. Those aren't final renderings, but, but they give people that feeling, and they certainly get me excited. So happy to answer questions, Mr. Jordan. I'm sure he is as well.
All right, Ms. Torres, do you want to start with any questions? Ms. Richardson?
I just want to know where the mirrors are going to be in the bathroom.
Mirrors, so like what we have on the B commons, we have to find places on the walls that are near the sinks in that general area. Typically, that's where mirrors will go. Ronnie, do you want to comment on that? We haven't specifically placed them at this point. But usually, like at the end spots, where those sinks are, there's usually like some pillars. There are opportunities to put mirrors in places like that.
Okay.
Really question. I had a chance to take a tour a couple of weeks ago. I don't remember the exact date, but just excited to see where it started and how it's come along. And I think the kids that are going to be able to have their first year there is going to be really excited about just the open space, the classrooms, the, the amount of lighting that comes into the building. And so, I'm just excited for us to go.
Yes, absolutely. And we toured on a pretty overcast day, and being in there is pretty amazing. And so, I think, you know, what I would ask of my colleagues and our community is we just have to continue to beat the drum for investing in the physical spaces where we send our students. I'm speaking before you, Mr. Meyer, because I know you're going to take my, take my words. But this is, this is the, where we want our kids to be learning. This is where we want to be sending them. And so I think we need to just not, you know, be, be done when the building is open and we've got students attending Charlottesville Middle School. We have to continue asking the city to invest in our physical spaces because all of them need to look like these images do. And going back to Ms. Johnson's presentation, the basic needs space that's in the middle school also, you didn't have a picture in there, you can't capture it all, but is another incredible space. That's a dedicated space for providing services and dignity to our families and students where we're kind of makeshift closet space is what we're using now in some of our buildings. And so yes, so thank you, Mr. Jordan, your task of handling this transition is immense. That's a huge lift, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I, I too was on the tour, so thank you for that. Mr. Jordan, thank you for leading the work there every day and Ms. Powell, you and your team for everything you're doing. This is a huge, heavy lift. And to be on task and on budget and to do that work is tremendous. And I will echo Ms. Julie. Every student and staff in the city of Charlottesville deserves a building that looks like this and promotes learning in an environment that is safe and comfortable and clean. And just really excited about the work that you're doing there, so thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Powell. Mr. Jordan, you're, the prize at the end is a nice new school building for yourself, so please keep with it. Ms. Powell, it looked like you took a picture from a live building cam. Is that like a tab that you have on your screen that you look at every day?
I don't, I don't look at it every day, but they're, the project team. I don't guess, you probably don't need that, but I, I just, I am, I'm one of the users who's authorized. It's the, it's a Nielsen system that I can look at and grab images from. They gave me access in part so I could provide these updates periodically. So it's where I grab a lot of the photos from, some of them like the geothermal wells. And when I was in there with Dr. Gurley, I took those pictures, but usually the photos you see are images I grabbed from their, their job site where they track the progress.
It would have been fun if you said, yeah, I'm looking at it every day and keeping it all accountable.
Yeah, I don't, I don't look at it every day though, I don't. But I, it's, it's, it's great. It's like the bright spot of my days when I usually, when I have time to look at it, it's usually the bright spot of my day.
Good. Related to that, and I think you did mention, June fifteenth is when the new wings are supposed to open, correct?
So it's substantial, what they call substantial completion date. And for us, with, with, of course, we still aren't having summer school at Beaufort this summer. There's still, we'll be still in punchless mode even on the new wing. So I won't say we're done, done then. The important thing for the contractors is that, that's when we have to be prepared to surrender what goes into phase one, phase two. Like that's when we, that's a big deal because they have, that's where they'll start to focus their efforts. Mr. Jordan has been working with us and with VMDO to plan meetings this month with staff to get everybody geared up for what's to come with transitioning furniture and everything. That's, that's a, that's one of the big lifts, Ms. Burns, you mentioned big lifts, that's a biggie that's coming up for us. Very happy to say our city did work into the contract. We have large containers coming, we're going to be able to donate a lot of the, the, whatever's good that we don't, we won't be needing in our new space. But would be welcomed in some underprivileged places outside of the US that are working to build schools. And so I think that's a really, really good thing for everyone to be aware of. And because of the timing of that with when we're getting the new furniture for Trailblazer, because they're the last of our elementary modernizations. I was able to get that piggybacked into those containers. So I feel really good about where the furniture is going from both the middle school. So that's a big lift though for our staff purging and getting ready to embrace all the new. But to do that, we got to kind of not take the old with us.
And, but, and I think I heard you say we're on time and on budget.
I will always, I can speak to the on time, like there's not, but the on budget piece, I'm always going to say, that's the city's story to tell, not mine. Because I'm not, I'm not involved with that part of it. You know, I've shared before, we, they hit a lot of rock early on that puts you on your heels a little bit. It's not like wildly out of budget in any stra, if it is, but I, I just can't speak specifically. That's not my story to tell. I know, I think we're using every bit of the budget that's, that was put aside for this project. I think all of it's being used for sure.
And will there be some kind of community event in June or July to allow the community to come see the new space?
It's going to be more, it's going to be closer to open house for returning. I, I say that only because I'm sure we'll be, they'll, they'll be in punch list up to here around that timeframe. So I wouldn't look for it to be open to the public in June. Certainly as we approach August, like in July, before school starts, it's obviously going to have to be open. And that'll be something we have to plan for how we, there's open for parents and students. And then there will need to be something for everybody else as well. There'll be different audiences who, who will need to and want to see this great investment that the community has made.
I just wanted to say, that sounds so cool. And I'm jealous that I'm graduating and I'm not going into middle school because that's so exciting. And I think it's going to be really well received from all the students. And I'm sure they appreciate this a lot.
All right, carry on. You can go back to your laptop and checking on the Nielsen camera, see what they've done in the ice. All right, next.
Thank you all. We now have Dr. Hastings with our recruitment update, recruitment plan twenty-four, twenty-five.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, my favorite member of the board, former Walk Overeen, Ms. Hudok over there. It's great to see you in this new role. And of course, Dr. Gurley, good evening. I think I know all of you, but I'm coming to you in a new role. I have a very long title, Administrator for Human Resources and Student Data. And a portion of that role is around recruitment and retention. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about recruitment and retention. And I am here on behalf of Ms. Lewis, our Human Resources Director, and the other two members of our amazing Human Resources Team. I do not do this alone, I'm just the messenger tonight. You received a written report in September that gives you the details about things like demographics, rates, hiring rates, retention rates. So that's really where you would find the great detail in this. That's not what we're here to talk about tonight. We're going to start a little bit with where our current openings are. I'm going to move into what our retention strategies are. And then I'll switch over to what we're doing to recruit our next generation of teachers. Let me just play with this microphone for a second. I'm good, I'm good, but, I'm sorry. All right, so hiring is always a fluid process. We're constantly seeing changes. We're constantly bringing people on board. You're doing it tonight as part of your personal agenda. But as of the fifteenth of December, we had hired one hundred and thirty-two new staff members, four of whom were administrators. Seventy-four were teachers, fifty-six were other staff, all the various and somebody roles that make our school division operate. You can see as you look at our distribution here of both racial breakdown and gender breakdown that we, we are making progress, but have continued work to do towards our strategic plan goals of a, of a more diversified incoming workforce here in Charlottesville City Schools. Right now, or rather as of the sixteenth of December, we had eight and a half full-time positions open in our schools. That broke down to one administrator, seven and a half teachers, plus another two part-time teachers and four instructional assistants. Then we, we're always hiring for substitute roles, so we're always in need of substitute custodians, instructional assistants, nurses, excuse me, nutrition workers and substitute teachers. As we look at it by level and by school of our elementary schools, Greenbrier Elementary is fully staffed. Our other schools are at one to three openings. In our middle grades, Walker fully staffed, Beaufort at three openings, CHS at three openings. And then Lugo McGinnis Academy and K Tech fully staffed. Last year, Josh Hernan, who was in my role previously, came and explained to you, or I think we presented to you, the Joint Legislative Audit Review Committee's report on Virginia's K-12 teacher pipeline. If you remember from that presentation, if you were here for that, you probably remember that the story isn't great. The outlook for teachers in the Commonwealth of Virginia is, is getting harder every year, quite frankly. So we see more teachers leaving the profession and we see our vacancy rates going up. Quite recently, I was doing an exercise with a group of our administrators at building level and division level. And we just did a, a quick check to see what the number of openings were in Region Five in our region. And at that date, in the middle of December, we had fifty-five open teaching positions in our region. And so this becomes a very competitive process in order to not just recruit teachers, but then also retain them and make sure that we can hold on to them over time. That J-LARC study really honed in on why it is that our teachers are leaving the profession. Now, this, this chart here on your left shows you statewide why it is that our teachers are leaving. And teachers report again statewide that the number one reason why they're leaving is a lack of support, followed by too high of a workload, ineffective school leadership and inadequate salary. Then let's take a look at what it looks like here in Charlottesville. So last year, when we checked with our staff as they were on their way out, we saw approximately forty percent of, or exactly forty percent of our staff were leaving for a new opportunity. I think that speaks pretty highly to what's going on in our region and the number of openings that are out there. Right now, as we work to retain teachers, there is a constant, ever-present need for teachers in every district in our region, which means that if we aren't working to retain them, someone else will be working to hire them. But we see a number of other reasons up here, ten percent unhappy with school leadership. But about a third of those from non-renewal to relocation and retirement are, are really not the area where our focus is going to be. We can't do much about people who are moving away or, and we encourage people to retire when they get to that age. But otherwise, we have about a third of, two-thirds of our staff that we have direct impact to work on retention for. In our current year, the number is pretty small, so the percentages don't tell us much. But we can see that five out of seven of our, of our folks have left us due to personal reasons, due to health or, or family reasons. And so this remains a stressful, difficult profession. And it remains an ever-present workload in front of us to ensure the retention of our staff. Looking at those big state numbers, we can connect those to the work that we're doing here in Charlottesville. First and foremost, support for teachers is directly, directly addressed by our strategic plan priority three for supporting our staff. Fully one quarter of our strategic plan is focused on supporting the staff who are in our schools. You approved for the coming calendar two mental health days, hoping that that will have an impact on retention. Everything that we do in our work has the potential to impact people's decisions to stay and continue to contribute to our school division. And then finally, we have seen since twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two to now, an increase of twelve percent of administrator retention. And so hopefully, as we see an evening out a consistency of school-based leadership, that'll have a trickle-down effect to staff remaining in their roles or remaining within our division. Here we see a, since twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, since that school year, our retention rates. Retention rates are measured against the previous school year. So when you see that bottom line there for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, that means when we started this school year, we retained eighty-two point one one percent of our staff, eighty-two point eight one of teachers and eighty-six point two one of administrators. All of these are interconnected roles. So the greater degree we have of retention overall, the better chance we have of sustaining retention in each of our roles. As a former school administrator, I have a pretty strong opinion on the impact of school administrators and the retention of teachers and staff in schools. And I'm, I'm proud to see that number increasing from where we were in twenty-twenty-one to where we are now. I do believe that's going to have a significant impact on retention of staff, not just teaching staff, all staff within our sites. When we think about our work around retention, our retention for the purposes of this conversation, really is going to break down into two areas. One, the work that we do as a human resources team specifically. And then two, the work that we do as a division around professional learning. We are a small team of human resources folks. We have four people, but we do, we do a lot of, I think, really good work. So it starts with the things that we have available to our staff around wellness. So we have an employees' program, we have the CARESOLIS program. And of course, many of us access the facility memberships, whether it's to different sports clubs or things in town. But then we also do some very targeted support. We have thirty-day, sixty-day, ninety-day meetings with human resources, which means a human resource member is reaching out to our new staff on a regular schedule to say, hey, how are things? How can we help? What do you need? We also, as an admin, as a human resources team, do office hours in each of our schools, make ourselves available to be here in the building to say, how can we help? Drop in, what can we do to support you? We've in, excuse me, we've increased our tuition reimbursement rates. We offer support for new and novice teachers through mentoring and individual coaching. And really, as we look at these last few bullets, we're really changing the way that we think about growing staff into new roles. So when I started as a school-based administrator, if a teacher was leaving, I put out an app, I put out a job posting and I had five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty applicants. That's not an exaggeration for a, a general education teacher. We don't have that luxury any longer. And so we have a very, a very specific need. We have a very specific need to be growing our staff from within. So we're going to support our staff who are not yet licensed to work towards their licensure and then also support our staff who are currently licensed to make sure that they're staying licensed. But then we're also going to work, we also continue to work to transform our instructional assistants into classroom teachers, to transform our classroom teachers into school-based administrators and to, to really be working to, while our staff are here as part of Charlottesville, to retain them even as they grow into new roles. From a professional learning side of the house, so when we think about our teacher workdays, our professional learning days, the work that happens in our schools, it's not just about making sure that our teachers are licensed and ready to work, but also do they have the skills to meet the challenges that are changing? And so I think about something as, as simple as what we heard from Ms. Johnson and, and the challenges that she's working as her department of, of one, to, to, to attend to. That is the same, that, that work is very difficult, it's very challenging. And we need to provide support to teachers and staff who are doing that work in the buildings every day to be able to do that same kind of work in their classrooms. And so our PL efforts are, are, start at a division level, they work down into our schools. And then we support teachers on a, on a daily basis through the work that they do in professional learning communities, for the work that they do in teams. And then of course, through the instructional coaching model that we're doing in our building. Our PL efforts aren't only limited to our teachers. We give opportunities for our teachers to become teacher leaders, but we also give opportunities for our assistant principals to grow as we work to retain them and grow them into principals and other leadership roles. And then we offer, or we participate in the recently appointed administrators program through Virginia Tech. The work of teaching is really hard and it comes out in that J-LARC study. And it's, it's not getting any easier. And we have a real need, a real significant need and focus to be supporting our teachers at their most important work, and that is around instructional support. So we start with our novice teachers and make sure that our novice teachers have mentoring and individualized coaching. There's a direct connection to the, the funding that we get through the Title II A Plan and the work that we do to ensure that our teachers are able to hit the ground running at the start of the year, but also grow into the full craft of teaching as they finish their first year and move on into their second and third years. And of course, we offer embedded support in each of our schools at the department and grade levels through specialist positions, through instructional coaches, and then we support through professional learning communities. Our recruitment season is just about kicking off. So here towards the end of the month, we'll start moving around the state and really around the region to do and to be engaged in in-person recruiting. That means that we're going to career fairs, we're going to different events at different schools. On the right, you can see, these are all the schools that we're planning to go to. Actually, we've added a few more in the last couple of days. So that's sending representatives from Charlottesville City Schools to these locations to meet the people who are coming out of education programs or other programs to work into our schools. We try to spread that load out among other administrators, in addition to the Human Resources Department, so that we can have alums go to the schools and, and be able to speak and talk about the connections. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a busy season. There's a lot of competition. I was surprised, it's my first year, so I don't have a year to compare it to, but I was surprised that just about every one of these sold out in about forty-eight hours. So these aren't, they don't just open, they don't, they don't have limitless space. So this has been a very competitive market to get into and then make sure that we have a table and we can conduct interviews. And that timeline is getting tighter and the stakes are getting higher. Or of course, we're also working with the city of Charlottesville, PBCC and UVA around other positions that are not classroom positions, but other positions to support in our schools. A few things that we're doing a little differently this year, we've always worked for clinical placements or student teachers. But this year, we really focused on expanding our, the access of specifically UVA, but all of the schools within our region for their student teachers to be in our schools. So if we, if you can come to our So if we, if you can come to our schools as a student teacher, then we can train you in the way we do things, and hopefully we can have first crack at hiring you into our roles. And this year, we made a concerted effort to do that. We had eighty-eight C C S teachers sign up to say that, yes, they'd be willing to take on a student teacher. It's a lot of work. It is a lot of work to to engage in an apprenticeship model where you're teaching someone how to do this professional craft. And we had eighty-eight people step up and say, yes, I'm willing to take on this work so that I can ensure that my school is fully staffed, that I can ensure that our community has best access. U V A has been a really, really excellent partner in this. As of December thirteenth, we had forty placements arranged. A quarter of those are in special education, which is fantastic. That's a very difficult position to fill. That number is actually up to forty-five now. We added a few more this week. But we're really working to have those placements come in. Now, if we think back to some of those earlier slides about retention efforts, hiring novice teachers means hiring teachers who need a great degree of support. But that's where we are right now. So we're going to continue to find, we're going to continue to work to find veteran teachers who are able to come into our schools and able to make an immediate impact. But there's also a really awesome opportunity with U V A here as our neighbor to be able to take on those students also and grow them. As I often remind principals, or I actually asked a group of principals recently, would you have put in the the work to make you the teacher that you became? Because it's it's a lot when you start in that first year. I would not. I'd love to have my first group of students back. Put it that way. We're also engaged, we submitted as part of the V D O E Alternative Route to License Your Program, we've submitted an application to join into this program. This is a new initiative the state, new initiative at the state in partnership with I Teach. What it allows us to do is to recruit associate teachers. Associate teachers are those folks who hold a bachelor's degree, are working towards licensure, but are not yet eligible for licensure. They have to be eligible within a year. We're hoping to get two people through this program, but at our recent administrator, our recent human resources administrators conference, this was a big topic of conversation that, as a state, we're looking at more and more ways that we can get people through non-traditional routes to come into work in our schools, because that's the nature of staffing right now. And again, if teachers who are coming out of a teacher preparation program, as novice teachers need a lot of support, so do teachers who are coming to us as associate teachers. And so it's it's incumbent upon us as we look at both our strategic planning, but also our efforts around human resources and professional learning, to make sure that we have the support for these folks when they come into our buildings. Finally, one change that, one one final change that we're engaging in is that our our internal or external application system, the way that people apply for jobs in Charleston City Schools is changing. So it looks more modern. It's updated. It looks like a modern website now. But we're using the Power School School Spring Platform. One really cool thing about that is that you actually, it's got a much more robust database search process. You can go in there and search by address. You don't have to. Up until recently, if you wanted to find a job, you had to go to an individual school division, you had to look up their postings. This has all of them. So anyone who's a Power School customer, which feels like just about everyone in the Commonwealth, anyone who's a Power School customer and uses this product, we can see all of those jobs. So we're really centralizing the search process for positions. And finally, we just, this is, you're the first to hear this, but we just finalized the date for our spring career fair. It'll be on March first. We're navigating P S A Ts and S A Ts and all the wonderful things that happen in this building. So we're going to go with March first, and we'll be as part of that, as we've done in previous years, we'll be offering onsite interviews for anticipated openings, which is a really cool thing. So it's hard to believe that in less than three months, we'll be, we'll be knee-deep in this. So fun times. That is all I have for you as part of my presentation. Happy to take any questions or talk through any part of it.
Thank you, Dr. Hastings.
My pleasure.
Mr. Meyer, do you have any?
Thank you, Dr. Hastings. And I, I think, so I want to make sure, at least my understanding too, and the way I think about this, is is things that the H R department is doing. There's a lot of other things that the school board, ourselves, and other things, like a new middle school, new buildings, installations, et cetera, that are important for retention too. Am I incorrect in that?
No, you're you're hundred percent right. In fact, I think you said the the prize at the end of the, at the end of this is that he gets a new school. So.
He better not leave. Doing all that work.
Retention, everything that happens in our bill, everything that happens here has an, has the potential to impact recruitment and retention, every single thing that happens in our buildings. And so at every job, every single component of all of the work that we do, I think every person who has an opportunity to lead in this division, one component of that leadership thinking needs to be, how do I help to keep the best people here and get the best people here?
Well, then, I want to, I mean, some observations and maybe a question or two that comes out of this, but I'm actually okay with a little bit of turn each year, just because I think we're going to make sure we keep the best. I'm also okay with people leaving, but that, knowing that maybe because we cannot offer them a leadership opportunity or something like that, like a vice principal opportunity, and they need to go to Almarl or somewhere else. But that, when that opportunity opens up here, that they're interested in, we have those people coming back. So our applicant pool for our administrators then is enriched with and or filled with former staffers from C C S. So and that's, I think, a private sector strategy that's also used, and I'd like to see us think about that too. So I think, Dr. Gurley, you have been doing that in a way, if I understand things correctly, with the professional learning opportunities you've been providing for staff to, again, look and and experience or mentor, I forgot how it all works, but become into a a leadership or junior administration level. I do think we're in a very competitive market here for staff and teachers. And again, we're surrounded by the county, school system, et cetera. You mentioned, I think, fifty-five openings right now in District Five, which is that. And so when I also think about this, I think about the need for good management and compensation. You know, I think we don't necessarily control compensation. Some of that is from the state level and our council of city colleagues or our city council colleagues. But at the moment, we're, I think, paying the best compared to the apples-to-apples of Alamo County, which is great. However, I do think we want to make sure we are also providing the best management, because that's what's going to differentiate ourselves. And so I do see some things in here where we're doing more professional ma, uh, leadership for administrators, which I think, can I mention that? That is great. But that is a differentiation, and I just want to make sure, I think, Dr. Gurley, you mentioned this, I really appreciate your leadership style, but is all the other principals and vice principals also kind of implementing your leadership style and and culture and and focus? And so I I do wonder, is there enough training that goes into? Because teachers go into teaching to to teach, and they get trained on teach. They don't necessarily get trained on management. And I I just wonder if that is being implemented enough to ensure that, again, staff feel like they're supported. Because when I see the thing, why, the things, why people are reason, leaving, they're unhappy with school leadership. Again, we can't, all of them, we can't get rid of that, and sometimes people need to move on again, but having a good boss is very important. And you mentioned that, Dr. Hastings. So I don't want us to lose sight on that. I think I saw some things in here that touch upon that. And I'm going to leave it there. So a lot of observations, sorry, but, and I do appreciate the addition of kind of why folks are leaving our system. Not too happy with all of that, but I think that's, again, a fair amount of healthy kind of churn that we need to have happen. Ultimately, to me, like, success is we have zero staff openings. So that's where I think we need to get to, because that demonstrates that people want to come to us. And that's, again, so we have some losses, but we're having more applicants to like twenty, twenty-five applicants per opening and getting the cream of the crop. So, thanks.
I think if I'm tracking some of what Mr. Meyer is referencing, perhaps it would be helpful for the board to receive a template copy of the evaluation document for administrators so that we can see the various categories on which they are evaluated annually.
Thank you. When you talk about retention and why teachers leave and stay and come and go, I, interestingly enough, am on a task force with the Virginia School Board Association that talks about students in schools and challenging environments, and and we talk about retention being part of that challenge. And what we hear in that space is that legislation coming down and governor's orders, it's too much, too fast. With the Virginia Literacy Act and then changing accreditation benchmarks right after that, it is so much work that we are asking our teachers to do. And it's not we, it is state-level we. And so I just want that to be said that at the V S B A level, we recognize that, and that is part of our legislative conversations coming up next week with the legislators, that this is hurting us. This is hurting us in a retention and long term, people are not going into the profession of teaching any longer. And because they hear their own teachers just dismayed by the workload of what they're being asked to do more and more and more. And so just want my colleagues to know that that's on the radar of the V S B A and and for you, Dr. Hastings, as well. And then wanted to also share observation, one of our strategic goals is to attract and retain more teachers of a diverse background. And so I specifically had questions about that when I looked at the slides and noticed that there were not many H B C Us listed. And after some conversation back and forth with Dr. Gurley, I think really impresses upon me that we have gone in years and people don't want to come to Charlottesville. And so we can do all the work that we want on the recruiting side and send you everywhere. But if the perception of Charlottesville is what it is, and I'm asking for my community and colleagues at city council to really lean into this and understand what culture looks like in Charlottesville, and they don't want to come here, specifically young black families and communities and people of color, they do not want to come here as professionals, because there is nothing for them to do relevant to their culture. That's a problem. And I think as a community, that's a conversation, I think, needs to happen as we talk about housing and as we talk about transportation and and all of the things that happen in the city. How are we also attracting a diverse group of people to our community? And so I think just for people to recognize that as a school district, we can only do so much to bring people here. If at the end of the day, the city of Charlottesville is not where the diverse people want to live. And so I applaud the work that's being done in that space, but again, we can only do so much and and drive so much of that. And so I appreciate what we do, but just know that it continues to be a barrier. So I appreciate the effort and work that goes into that, but as a city, if we don't do better, they're not going to come. Thank you.
And just to, just for public record, you know, what Ms. Burns was referring to is she had asked a question about our recruitment efforts at historically black colleges, and what I shared is that we've done a lot of intentional work, specifically, we've gone to Norfolk State a few years. We've gone to Virginia State every year since I've been here, and we have not brought back one black applicant to Charlottesville City Schools. And I will say that it is, it is factually statistically correct that historically black colleges produce the highest number of African-American teachers yearly. And so, you know, U V A produces a lot of teachers, but they do not produce more black teachers than historically black colleges. And so with that being said, we are just not bringing people back. And I I do believe that it's it's due to, you know, what is it for me to do in this community? And one thing that I did think about after I, after I had send on our, on our communication is that black people do work where other black people are. And so, and I say that to say that, you know, the word of mouth referral is like, what's in it for me? So if I find out, like, why are you working there, then maybe I will have an interest to also work there. And so I do feel like that's an area of opportunity for us that, you know, we can get our friends here, but just informally and having conversations, it still comes back to the, yeah, but that's not for me, you know. I want a nice brunch on Sunday. And, you know, I want to see people who look like me, and it's just not available. And so, and I will say that, you know, young graduates of all colors say the same thing, that on the weekend, on the weekends, they're traveling to Richmond, they're traveling to D C, they're they're going places where things are happening. And, you know, Charlottesville is a bedroom community. But it's not a bedroom community for black folks.
Thank you. I appreciate you adding that context.
Wow, that was a lot. I felt like he was talking to me. Okay, um, I I did want to ask about the increase in the tuition reimbursement, because is that a thousand? What was it previously?
Five hundred.
Okay. And then I wanted to say how I'm excited, and I love to hear feedback about the A D C C S volunteers with the teachers, working with the teacher-student partnership. I think like the buddy system is really important when you're starting a new career and having someone who is experienced to kind of help you along the way. It's really important. So I really appreciate that new component that we are putting together. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Hastings. Thank you. Just a quick question about the Growing Our Own or the I Teach program. So you said we're in the midst of an application. So what what are the barriers or what steps are we waiting?
So we're we're waiting on the state. So we've submitted the application, and we will, this would not be until the coming school year. So we're we're in the application window, I think, May, April, May. So by May, we'll know where where we stand in this process.
So what are the criteria to to be approved? Like, any school division, or is there, or what are the limits?
The state has established a set of, a set of criteria for the, for this program, and each school division had to submit something that said, this is how we intend to reach the goals of this program and how we'll make it within our school district.
Language by saying we have to be very clear about the professional learning and support we're going to provide for them.
I'm sorry, I can go one more time.
Tiered approach of how we're going to integrate them into the system and provide them opportunities to learn at the same time while they're being the professional. And that plan has to be explicit to say, here's how much time in the classroom, here's how much time for instruction. Here's how much time watching and observing, here's how much time they're mentoring. So we just have to work through that plan. So we'll get some feedback from the state on what we presented, and then they'll ask us to tweak, and hopefully by May, we have that set.
So I'm smirking, and I don't know if people can say this, I mean, see this, but seems to me like we hear a lot of these great potential programs that V D O E offers or the state offers, but they kind of then throw it at school divisions and say, show us what you're going to do, you know, or we have to kind of create our own, like you said, you had to do a lot of work to kind of show the the scaffolded supports that we're going to do. And I'm, this is not on us. I mean, it's just.
Pardon me? I'm not always, I'm not always in the state supportive situation, but for Charlottesville to autonomously come up with what we would like it to look like, makes it look different than Harrisonburg, who was approved last year. And they've already had four teachers go through this process. But we could describe and package it unique to Charlottesville. So I'm appreciative of them asking for.
I'm not, I'm not being negative on them necessarily, and I think we've always done a great job of trying to create something that will work for Charlottesville. But I just find it intriguing. And again, this is just a comment. It's not a dig on us at all. You know, that that they're like, oh, here, you can do this, but figure it out on your own. I mean, because it didn't sound like they gave us a template necessarily to work off of, or did they?
Thankfully, Mo Gaffney works for I Teach, and she gave us a template. So she's been a very good partner in this work. So the template that the state has as the grant, and then she's been pulling out the particulars and providing examples. So it's been a really good partnership with her. I do not anticipate that it will be much longer for us having success. Then we just need to develop the financial pieces behind the scene to make sure.
Yeah. No, I'm I'm appreciative of it and the possibility. And we obviously have to get creative and and finding ways to get teachers to the divisions. But anyway, I'll leave it at that. Yeah, no, I appreciate you and appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next up, we have board response to written reports, the first of which are. The first of which are the board member committee assignments for the upcoming year. I think this will come back on the consent agenda next month. And so we've kept things as assigned from last year. But any changes we need to talk about between now and next month, if there's any swapping or reassignment of those assignments. We also have our board member committee reports and the outcome of student disciplinary matters. This brings us to our next opportunity for comments from members of the community. I'll start with Mr. Moran, if you wanted to come back up.
With that button. How about now? All right. Dr. Gurley, members of the board. My name is Chuck Moran. As you probably know by now, I am the great nephew of the now former namesake, Sarepta Moran, and a graduate of the city schools. I live at nine thirty-two Bing Lane in Charlottesville, right next to the now named Tall Oaks Elementary, which I actually really do like that name quite a lot. So we have now closed out the renaming process as of tonight. I am looking back, as we often do at the end of a process. I've been engaged in this for two years. It was two years ago this month that I submitted a video to the board saying that I thought we were engaging in a flawed process. And I still feel that way in a, in a number of ways. In looking back, there have been a number of highs and lows. Among the highs, I think that the individual naming committees was a fantastic idea. I wish we'd instituted that earlier, but it was a really great idea. And I think it came in at a good time, considering that it wasn't earlier. I am grateful to have been selected to be on the Burnley Moran renaming committee. I do like the new name that we came up with. I fully support the new name of Sunrise. I'd like to thank Dr. Johnson for running some really great meetings and thought those were very courteous and professionally handled. And I'd also like to thank Beth Chuck, who more than anyone in this room engaged with me throughout the process. She reached out to me proactively when a news release was about to come out by phone to make sure that I was aware ahead of time. And she was very responsive during my FOIA request. So thank you, Ms. Chuck. On the low side, there are highs and lows. On the low side, my lows are well documented. If you need copies of my emails, just search through your email under Chuck Moran and you will see that I've had quite a number of complaints primarily focused on the documents that were written by Mr. Phil Varner. I still feel like those were unnecessary. I think that going back two years ago, what I said as a branding person, and that's what I do professionally, we could have just renamed the schools. We could have very easily just said, it's time for a refresh. Let's just come up with some new names and moved ahead. We didn't do it that way. And so I'm still sore about the fact that a lot of the namesakes were dragged through the mud, including my ancestor. Because these documents were not substantiated. In fact, the author himself says that he's not a historian. And he made the point in the daily progress that he expected the division to do a deeper dive. And that was not, that did not happen as well. The last part on the, on the lows was that I really felt like Ms. Burnley, Ms. Moran and Mr. Johnson were not allowed to be put back into the renaming process. I think that was a failure because had I been on the renaming committee of any of those committees and had the ability to review like Johnson via, Jackson via, the ability to retain the names based on the capriciousness of when those people were born and were able to teach, then we might've had a different outcome. But again, water under the bridge. So in closing, Amanda Corman with the school division asked me a year or so ago, what it would take for me to feel comfortable about coming to the renaming celebration. I will attend that. And for me, it will be full circle. Because I attended Burnley Moran's dedication ceremony. I was a little kid, four or five years old, and I'm actually the person who pulled the covering off of the portrait that sits at the school at this time. So I have two requests at this point, at this point. One is that that portrait be returned to our family. If her name is going to be removed from the school, I would very much like to have that portrait back. And secondly, by close of business tomorrow, now that the documents are no longer needed, I ask the division to remove those documents so that they can no longer provide harm or misinformation to the community. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Are there any others in Mr. Hartline? Are you, come on down.
Thanks for letting me speak again this evening. With the naming process of the schools coming to a close, I just wanted to know where in the process is the name for Walker Upper Elementary? Name for Haswell Hunter Walker? In the board meetings I've attended, I haven't seen any information on where this name is or where it's going. I do know that the building will eventually become the preschool center, but what will happen to the name? I'm curious in my involvement with the naming process, and I look forward to hearing where we go with this final name left. Thank you.
And I will go ahead and speak to that. The, we're going to, we'll, we will be sunsetting that name during the close, when the school closes on next year. So that's why I was never included in the naming process.
Thank you. Any other members in the media center wishing to give a comment? All right. Looks like we have somebody in the Zoom room. If you are interested in giving comment, you can raise your hand. All right. We will close out our final public comment section and move on to comments from members of the board. I'm going to start just by saying I'm sure I was joined with many of my fellow parents in the division, being excited to send my child back to school this morning after an extended time off. But I just wanted to highlight just the impact that the schools have on our community. You know, the loss of instructional time, access to food and basic needs that we heard highlighted earlier tonight, access to mental health supports, you know, that aside from the inconveniences that schools being closed pose to families. Mr. Hartline doesn't let us forget, as he shouldn't, the car fire that happened at Jackson Via last year. That was a result of leaves not being removed. And now we're seeing the ongoing impacts from this storm impacting our schools. And so I just, maybe this is a request for a written report, but something that just really delineates the responsibilities of school personnel and our colleagues in the city. Just so that we can be clear, I feel like we are clear, but perhaps our colleagues are not clear on who is responsible for what. What is the role of a custodian and school personnel in cleaning up after a storm? And what are we paying the city a good sum of money annually to take care of? And so that is my request. You know, I appreciate Dr. Gurley, you and your team and the efforts that you've made this week to communicate with the city and to work to get our kids back to school as safely as possible. Thank you. Mr. Meyer, head your way.
Mr. I'm gonna build off of, and thank you, Mr. Hartline. I always appreciate your, your observations and your comments. I did want to let you know that I sent ten requests to the city this morning through the Seaville app to have sidewalks cleared on Harris Road so that kids could walk safely to the school. And unfortunately, when I, the responses I got back from them were that the task had been completed. And it was their responsibility to, as of six thirty A M. Yesterday morning, to go out and review the safe routes and cite homeowners who had not cleared their sidewalks yet and give them twenty-four hours, which should have completed, sorry, this morning at six thirty before our kids were supposed to walk to school. And, and they were, they were supposed to send out crews today at the cost of the homeowner to clear those sidewalks. I, I hope that's happening around the city. I haven't checked it. But when I drive home today past Harris Road and Jackson Via, I will be verifying again and sending another note to city council, asking them to do their job and/or hold their city staff accountable for saying, doing what they said they were going to do, which was cite homeowners for not clearing their sidewalks. So all that said, and getting to, again, building off of what Ms. Dooley, your chair just mentioned is there are unfortunately, this is my kind of unfortunate lesson, my first year as school board member, that we do not control. A lot of these things include our budget and a lot of operational functionalities, which I want to focus on and being, having excellence and do impact the retention of our, our faculty and staff. And I think Dr. or Mr. Hartline, the example of the fire, you know, how demoralizing is that to staff? And unfortunately, again, is that there's not things that I can hold anybody accountable for. So I am asking questions to Dr. Gurley frequently documenting these things. I think Ms. Powell and Dr. Gurley might get too many emails from me. But please do know and understand I am thinking frequently about, again, how to work strategically and constructively with our city colleagues to hold them accountable, to deliver the services that we pay for and ensure our staff have a good operations and that our students and family can get to school, like transportation, have buses that are not delayed, have bus drivers, et cetera, frequently. So enough of my little soapbox on that. But I do think in colleagues, looking at twenty twenty-five and again, thinking about all of the violence and emotion, not all the violence, but certain amount of in our community and emotional challenges our students face. I would like to hear from city colleagues and specifically probably the police department on what are they doing to proactively engage the youth of our communities and de, and de-escalate the violence that's happening? Cause it, as I think we've commented frequently, these are things that are coming into our schools and impacting our ability to, our students' ability to focus on learning and our ability to have a structured school environment that promotes learning. So I do hope we can engage with our city colleagues on that. And I think Ms. Dooley, you mentioned, because we cannot do everything. Finally, I just want to, I've been thinking a lot about, and then for the public, the general assembly is discussing a number of education bills at this moment, some of them around our standards of assessment. And I think there are some legislation that is out there, for example, to try to change some of the directives that came down from the state board of education around, for example, only allowing our English language learner students one and a half years before they have to have basically mastered English and, and a subject. And if they do not pass that, if they do not do that, we get dinged on that. Our current, I think allowance is five and a half years, which again, we should try to do that quicker than five and a half years. But one and a half years seems a little early. And I think the legislation that's being promoted would allow students to take tests in their native language, which, okay, that could be a compromise. But I think there are a lot of things unfortunately that have been promoted by the existing administration, the governors, that unfortunately we will be having to deal with this year. And it could look make, which I don't think is necessarily true, but make our skill or schools seem like they're failing. And I think that is demoralizing to our staff and I'm sorry about that. And I want the staff to know that we will be working to try to change those things and ensure that there's an equal playing field. When we're thinking about what schools are and how they're doing, what schools, who schools and how are they doing? And that's another kind of challenge. I think I'm thinking about the year and want to basically make sure we're proactive about. So enough of my soapbox here, but thank you very much. And colleagues, I think we had a very productive twenty twenty-four and I look forward to a productive twenty twenty-five with you. Thanks.
Thank you. And while Mr. Meyer was over on Harris Road, I was in my Fifeville neighborhood and was equally disappointed and dismayed and sent in my own app requests for the Prospect Avenue area where the Greenstones on Fifth are. And then the Forest Hills neighborhood area walking to Buford, where of particular concern to me, when we talk about attendance and how children do get to school. And there was some community chatter about kids in the street throwing snowballs. I'm actually okay with that. Kids do that. They should throw snowballs and I'm okay with that. But standing in the street doing that was because they couldn't stand in the sidewalk. There was nowhere for them to safely stand because people didn't maintain their sidewalks in that area, Greenstone on Fifth. And so again, as we have these conversations, that was not by fault of the school district, but by lack of work in the community. And so just reiterating and understanding that. And then in regards to when we talk about standards changing and again, talked about this earlier with retention. One of the items, again, that the challenging school environments committee is looking at, the V S B A is our English language learners. And so know that that is also on our radar for that conversation to happen with legislators and, and what that looks like for the timeline and also testing in native languages, recognizing that collectively there are over a hundred native languages. And we can't just say, here's the top five when we talk about equity. And so just understanding what that work and what that ask would truly be if we went in that direction. So wanted to share that and appreciate Dr. Gurley and your leadership through this lovely snow. And everything else do for us. So thank you. Appreciate you.
I just would like to echo all of the things that my colleague Kribs already said. And I also do want to think, take this time to thank Dom and Lisa, not, you know, Lisa as the chair and Dom as the vice chair, for not only your work, but for your mentorships behind the scene that nobody gets to see. So I appreciate you both. I just want to say happy new year and welcome back everyone. And I'm ready for the school year to continue. Thank you.
So I live on the other side of town. So, so Burnley Moran's slash Sunrise Education and Summit side of town. And put in a few photos and an email to some of our counselor co-parts, expressing my concern as a, as a community member. Witness and I, and I, again, I've said this before, but I drive around town and provide healthcare to people. So have to access their homes and drive and park and try and safely get out of my car to get to their houses and firsthand hit some, hit some ice and, and you know, gravity works. So, but luckily I'm here and, and just a little sore. But anyway, big concerns regarding just inaccessible crosswalks. I mean, throughout the entire city, I mean, people standing, I mean, I watched people stand like, how am I, how do I navigate this? You know, stepping through ice and piles of snow to try and get to a crosswalk. Four foot piles of snow at, at dangerous intersections when there's no snow. So just, these were just a couple of examples of pictures that, that I sent. And with an awareness that it's been a while since we in Charlottesville have had this much snow. And, and the snow that we have had the last several years typically is followed by temperatures in the high forties, sometimes fifties. So there's a melt that happens. So trying to just maintain that and, and, and an awareness and the number of snow plows that are out there and probably contracting people to just put on those big old plows on the front of their trucks. So realizing again that this was unique, but it happened. And, and it really is impacting safety on so many levels, you know, so not just sidewalks. And I'm supportive of that. But again, an awareness that there might be some people who can't shovel their sidewalks. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of. shovel their sidewalks. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of layers to this, but again, from a school board perspective and a community member. You know, this did, this is impacting safety and roads, you know, we're talking, let's look at Market Street. Two lanes and you should have parking, you know, on, on at least one, if not both sides and parts of that. Is maybe one and a half lanes of accessible driving, maybe a little bit better as of today. But no parking, you know, no parking available in front of the Central Library on, on Market Street. I mean, so there's a lot of work, a lot of concerns. I'm sure our counterparts at, at the city are, are hearing about this. And, and I don't have an answer, but we all, again, we know we can do better. But safety and yes, getting our students into the buildings, taking care of our neighbors. Can also be a part of it, you know, outreach like, and just knowing who can and who can't get out of their homes. Trying to help in that way. But I appreciate and I know also that Dr. Gurley and Ms. Powell, you know, have, have been on the phone and, and I know that the city's aware. But I hope, as my colleagues have also said, that we're, we're doing the best. And it's a tough call to delay school, to, to cancel school. You know, for some people, it's not the right call and it won't be the right call until there's no snow on the roads. And that's a real, that's a reality for some. So again, I don't think or I do know without a doubt, we prioritize safety of staff and students. But this is, this was unique and it's really, really hard. And we're supposed to get a little bit more snow tomorrow and Saturday, I think. So I appreciate everybody. I appreciate Mr. Morse working with me the last year. I appreciate the rest of the school board. It's been a pleasure and it's an honor to work with all of you. And I look forward to this next year as well. So stay safe, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gurley, any remarks?
All right. I just want to, one, just thank everyone for the grace that they've extended over the last few days. It's, you know, one of the hardest jobs of the superintendency is, you know, snow days because like every day, we're prioritizing student's safety as well as the safety of our families and our students. And so I know people come from everywhere and it's, you know, one of the emails I received yesterday was like, you know, I live in this area and what do I do? And I want you to first prioritize yourself. And you know, I know you have a decision to make for yourself and your families. But ultimately, I think what you heard today is, you know, there are other variables. So I do want to thank, you know, our bus drivers. I gave transportation a call this morning. And it's like, just want to make sure we've looked at the roads clearly because I'm taking my advisement from them and I want to make sure we've taken, we've looked at the streets and, and make sure that we're just taking our time. We get there when we get there. And I, and I also want to thank the people who are, you know, the community's really rallied together. You know, I really want to thank the folks who have helped our students get to school. You know, students have normally walked and you know, I know that there have been instances today where we've helped students to get in vans and cars and get to schools. So I appreciate that. And I also want to shout out some students. I don't like, I typically don't like to copy and paste emails so that students get the same email. So I think I just really want to shout out some students out because since I've been sitting in this, you know, this room, I've gotten a lot of emails from students. And just they're sharing their concerns about, you know, sidewalks at the schools, sidewalks in the communities. So I just want to acknowledge Sophia, Hayden, Josephine, Hart, Elodie, Jane, Eli, Naomi, Skylar, Macy, Riley, and I think there was one other student, maybe I already responded to that student. But I just want to thank you all because I hear you. I definitely understand, you know, the road conditions are different all over the city. Your voices mean so much to me. I thank you. I thank your teachers for suggesting that you reach out to me. Because, you know, as we hear from our student rep monthly, your voices matter. And so many of you've talked about the sidewalks at the school. And so I've already forwarded on to your principal. He's already assured me that we are addressing it. And so just be safe in your travels tomorrow. There's a two hour delay and just, you know, use your best judgment to our staff.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We do have some upcoming meetings. Thursday, January 30th, we have a budget work session back at Walker Upper Elementary. And the following Thursday, February 6th is our normally scheduled school board meeting back here. And starting with closed session at four. And then on February 10th, we have a joint work session with our city council colleagues back at Walker.
And we had to wrap up.
Nice. Oh, Ms. Swift's not here. So I didn't even mention that. But it's you.
So I just want to make sure. So I'm going to, I'm going to provide you all tomorrow, a copy of the administrator evaluation that we use the template for that. And I want to make sure that I'm, that I'm saying the same thing. In terms of the roles and responsibilities, we're really clear on that. So what we can do is, is specific for, is it specific for snow?
I think, um, snow falls under it, but, um, general grounds maintenance.
Yes. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you our interpretation of what that is. Because as we saw with like the Johnson project, you know, I love our city partners, but they struggle with what's facilities and what's parks are wrecked. So we'll, we can tell you what we believe it to be. And then some of that they struggle.
And that can perhaps start a conversation between us and city council to ensure that we are all clear on who should be doing what.
Grounds. Okay. So and Mr. Hartline, don't clean the tree lines. We, we will make sure the, the tree line gets taken care of. Please.
All right. And with that, we are adjourned. Drive safely, everyone. Stay warm.